Thanks Abby.
I'm gonna get out and back in. It doesn't look like I'm able to control my video. Oh wait, here, maybe this will do it. Okay, thank you, excuse me.
Yeah, I do have that it is six o'clock and Jacob's just hopping on now.
Right for Jacob here a second.
He's in, he's just an attendee.
He's in?
He is in.
Okay. Alrighty, well I'd like to call this meeting to order. Could we have a roll call?
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Elliott? Ms. Hart? Mr. Fagan? Ms. Williams? Ms. Hancock?
Very good. We have a call.
Sandy, you are muted.
I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Taylor, you have six.
Very good. Meeting summaries here. I'd like to, meeting minutes from executive meeting of May 6th. I'd like to get those approved.
They're approved.
Okay, could we, since we're doing this via WebEx, could you say your name before you make the motion?
Elliot, I make a motion.
Hart approved or seconded.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Eyes have that. And then we also have the meeting minutes from the public hearing executive session of May 13th, 2024. Can I get a motion or, do we have a motion of approval or any questions on the minutes?
Elliot, motion for approval.
Good. Have a second. Thank you. All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Eyes have it. Okay. St. Louis County Planning Commission status sheet. Do we have anything?
We have no status sheet this month.
Okay. Committee reports? Doesn't look like we have any. Is that be correct?
That's correct.
Okay. New business, consideration of petitions from the public hearing.
Good evening. PC 15-24 Joyce and More. Is it required for a conditional use permit in the C to shopping districts? So, for the purpose of vehicle repair facility for automobiles on a 0.61 tract located in northwestern quadrant of the intersection of Fifey Road and Olive Boulevard. As the commissioners may recall, the site is in the west county and to the right of the screen is the subject site outlined in red. This is larger area photograph. It shows the relationship of the subject sites to surrounding developments. Most of the dominant land use in this location is commercial. The request is for a conditional use permit in the C to shopping districts to operate a vehicle repair facility for automobile. The site has been subject to two different petitions in the past. It was first the subject of PC 174-70 New Four Seasons, which was a request for a conditional use permit in the C to shopping districts to develop a service station. In 1984, there was a request for an amended conditional use permit via PC 61-84 Parkway Holding Company to add an exclusively self-service gas station. Subsequently, there were three amendments to the conditions of development approved in 1984. Between 1991 and 1998, first in May 1991, there was a request to allow a convenience store and to increase the pump island canopy. In November 1991, there was another request to reduce the required setback on the site. And in July 1998, the petitioners requested an amendment to permit a vehicle service center and some amendment to the existing conditions of development. The planning commission approved some requests but maintained certain restrictions. Currently, the site operates as a vehicle service center. The preliminary site development plan shown at the public hearing retained the existing building and some other features on the site such as the parking, the curb course on Olive Boulevard and Fifey Road, the cross access easements at the southwestern corner of the subject site, the signage, the light standards, and the pavement. The department is recommending approval because the request meets the four-pronged conditional use permit test. The auto-oriented use is in keeping with other uses along Olive Boulevard. The proposed use can be operated in a manner that is not detrimental to surrounding permitted developments. Conditions of development will ensure the use is visually compatible with permitted uses in the surrounding area. The development and use are deemed desirable to preserve and promote the public health, safety, and general welfare of St. Louis County.
Okay, for the recommendation of the staff, do I have a motion of approval for this?
I see how we have some revisions to the site development plan.
Right ahead.
Yeah, so some of the recommendations that we are proposing is that we want more plantings along Olive Boulevard and Fifey Road. Materials including tires, auto parts, scrap, and other refuse shall be stored indoors or be enclosed in the site proof area. All trash areas and oil storage shall be appropriately landscaped around its perimeter. And in the future, in the event of a complete redevelopment, the department is proposing some modifications to the size configurations. The first is that we're proposing to close the curb courts on Olive Boulevard and building sidewalk conforming to county ADA standards addressing to Fifey Road. We're also proposing that the existing sign should not be reused. Our proposing monument sign. And we also recommend architectural elevations to ensure that all facade of the buildings are treated equally. And at this time ask for a motion.
You heard the recommendation and for approval for this. Do we have a motion?
Elliot, I make a recommendation for approval if they follow the recommended SDP revisions.
Wait a second.
Hancock, second.
Are there any, any questions on this? Okay, if not, I'd like to have a vote for this. All those in favor? Aye? Any opposed? Eyes have it. This is approved. Our next letter for approval is PC 14-24 Pickup Outfitters.
There should be one other new, new business item next.
Yeah, was that, yeah, PC 14-24.
Next is PC 16-24 University Crossing.
Okay, that must have not been on mine. Can the presenter present that to us or are we just gonna make an approval?
Is that next on the slideshow Gretchen?
Yeah, 16-24 is on the slide right now.
Oh. No, it hasn't switched. Will you stop sharing and share again?
Yep.
Thanks.
Let's see here.
Yeah, that's up now. Thank you.
Good evening commissioners. Before you is PC 16-24 University Crossing. The request is for a change of zoning from C8 Planned Commercial District to MXD Mixed Use Development District for a 1.98 acre tract located in the northeastern quadrant at the intersection of North Hanley Road and University Place Drive. The proposed uses are multiple family residences and offices. As you can see from the context map, the site is located in inner north county. The aerial shows the subject site outlined in red. This is a larger aerial of the site, once again outlined in red. The site is located on the southern end of an existing parking lot associated with the Metro Transit North Hanley Station, which also features a parking garage, bus terminal, and light rail stop. The requested change of zoning from C8 Planned Commercial Districts to MXD Mixed Use Development District would facilitate the development of multiple family residences and offices at the petitioned location. The Metro Transit North Hanley Station and attendant parking infrastructure were initially developed via PC 9191 by State Development Agency. Two additional amended developments have taken place at this C8 district. The first to enable the construction of the parking garage and the second to facilitate the vacation of Giger Road, now University Place Drive. Notably, the existing C8 Planned Commercial District ordinance only permits a light rail station, terminal for buses, parking lots, and associated commercial services. The preliminary site development plan shows a three and four-story building located at the intersection of University Place Drive and West Loop Boulevard. The proposed 72,000 square foot building would include 60 dwelling units. Roughly 2,000 square feet of the building's footprint would be set aside for professional office spaces. The preliminary site development plan also shows 70 parking spaces behind the building. A resident green space is shown in the middle of the site. The preliminary landscape plan shows buffer yards along both University Place Drive and West Loop Boulevard. You can also see that green space outlined in kind of a square behind the buildings. Additionally, the landscape plan demonstrates appropriate parking lot landscaping. The department will note that plantings are Missouri native and pollinator friendly. The department is recommending approval of the request. The department finds that the MXD Mixed Use Development District is appropriate at the location and is appropriate for facilitating the proposed development. The Metro Transit North Hanley Station parking lot is deeply underutilized and the proposal offers a creative reconceptualization of idle impervious pavement. Further, the proposal offers a model for future transit-oriented development in St. Louis County and promotes quality, affordable, and mixed-income housing production. In addition, the proposal demonstrates how office and residential land uses can be appropriately situated within one site. Finally, the department would note that the project has received substantial state and local level support. The Missouri Housing Development Commission has awarded the project substantial low-income housing tax credits and the St. Louis County Office of Community Development has dedicated home funds to the development as well. And at this time, I would request a motion.
You've heard the recommendation of the department. Do I have a motion?
Fagan, motion to approve.
Do a second.
Second.
I would just note that Mr. Bedell has joined the meeting as well.
Very good. Do we have any questions on the?
Yes. This is our Vetta Williams. I have a question. This is for the planning staff. Has there been any discussion about a future mixed-use development at this location as well?
To date, we have not received any sort of additional proposals. However, we have had conversations that ByState is actively interested that if this development is successful in exploring additional, additional sort of opportunities at this site. Because even with the development of this corner of the parking lot, it will still have a very substantial number of parking stalls. Very infrequently is the, is the parking field anywhere near full. So at that site, not currently. However, what I would note is that next week at public hearing, there will be a, a public hearing for a large multi-family development immediately across the street. So there is the opportunity for a lot of development at this corner in the next couple of years.
So when you say immediately across the street, you mean across the street from?
Across, excuse me, not Hanley, University, across University.
Okay, because I'm very familiar with this area. And yes, that parking lot is underutilized. There are a lot of parking spaces that never get used. And I have noticed that many of the single-family residents on Hanley Boulevard are now vacated and boarded up. And, and then I know across the street on Hanley, there is an apartment complex, an existing apartment complex. So, yeah, I was just wondering if there had been any discussions for further development on the, on the actual site itself.
Not on the actual site, but next week, the, the commission will see the petitioner for across the street, some of those houses that are boarded up that you're discussing. There's a proposal for, for a large redevelopment there.
And would that be single family or apartments?
It'd be multi-family development.
Multi-family.
Yeah.
Okay, I have no more questions.
Any more questions? Okay, if not, you've heard the motion and the second. Could we get a vote on this? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Nays? Eyes have it. This is approved. Old business ready for action. Letters for approval.
Good evening.
12-24.
PC 12-24, Mr. and Mrs. Klinger is an amended C8 for veterinary clinic pet daycare facility and all C2 shopping district permitted uses on 0.41 acres located on the east side of Telegraph Road approximately 120 feet north of England Town Road. This is coming before you tonight as a letter of recommendation consistent with the staff report you saw at your last executive meeting.
Okay, you've heard the letter for recommendation. Can I get a motion for approval?
Next motion.
Second on that motion?
Fagan, second.
Motion made and second. And we need a vote for all those in favor. Signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Eyes have it. PC 14-24.
PC, PC 14-24 Pickup Outfitters. The request for amended developments in the C8 Planned Commercial Districts and a change in zoning from C8 to Auto Residence Districts for the purpose of parking outdoor storage and advertising signs on a 3.03 acres tract located in the east of Lindbergh Boulevard approximately 500 feet north of Ardi Road. As commissioners may recall, the site is located in northwest county and to the right of the screen is the subject site outlined in red. This is coming to you as letter of recommendation, but we have some modifications to to the information report that you saw the last time. After the May 6th executive meeting, the petitioners requested revisions to the recommendations, asking for decorative fencing along North Lindbergh Boulevard. And also requested that the office building on the previous C8 ordinance be maintained. And they also requested for a relief from the 50-foot setback at the eastern property line of putting the single-family residence to accommodate the said office building. The department found the request reasonable and, and recommended the addition of slits to the chain link fence to maintain visual consistency with the neighboring parcel. The department also recommended that the 35-foot buffet yard along North Lindbergh Boulevard be planted with two trees and four shrubs per 20 linear feet and recommended concrete cops around the new parking area. The department also advised the petitioners that the petition was not advertised to include the office building and as such cannot be added as a permitted use. The petitioners understand that a new public hearing will be required to permit that use if it is desired at the future dates.
So there's, we have no approval for this?
We had, we had an approval, a motion of approval from the last executive session that we had. But after the May 6th executive meeting, the petitioners had some requests for revisions for the recommendations that we had for them.
And if they agreed to that?
Yes, they have agreed to all of these and.
So, so you're just bringing that back for us to know we don't have to approve this?
No, this is coming to you tonight as a letter of recommendation with modifications.
Okay, so we gotta, we have to take a vote on it then?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a, a motion for approval?
Hancock, so moved.
Have a second?
Elliot, second.
Are there any questions?
Yes, I have a question. This is our Vetta Williams. Can someone tell me about this chain link fence with slats? What is, what does that look like? I mean, are, are the slats touching each other? They're horizontal? What, what are we seeing here? And where, where on the site? Can you show where on the site this would be located?
Gretchen, would you pull up perhaps Google Earth and/or Google Maps and drop down next to the site? And we can talk about, a little bit about it. So commissioner, the applicant subsequent to the planning commission's decision to approve the request, they asked whether the, the condition that you all approved requiring a decorative site-proof fence be amended to allow a chain link fence with slats. Their rationale being is that they already use chain link with slats around their parcel currently. So if they, for this portion, if they, they would have a different fencing type if the requirement were to be maintained as a decorative site-proof, which typically would be a vinyl, like a white vinyl type of fence. They asked for that relief to match with what they already have. Staff discussed it internally. We find that the request is reasonable to keep it visually, to keep it at least visually of one's style. The reason why we couldn't go the other direction to require the entirety of the fence be site-proof decorative, which is what I honestly would have preferred, is because the other parcel is not, there's no review or, or request for changes to that site. So legally, we can't require that they move that fence down along the entirety of the frontage. So to keep that sort of visual look the exact same, we did, we found that it's, that it's reasonable along a high-speed arterial. But Gretchen, have you found that site on Google Maps and can pull it up?
So here's the one from RGIS that might help with just seeing property lines. Then I can also, can we see this?
Yeah, we can see it Gretchen.
Perfect.
Yeah, so the parcel under, under consideration by the commission this evening is that parcel where you see 160-89. That's the parcel that is of, that, that's being acted upon. And it would be added on to sort of that parcel, that parcel just to the south of it. So they would be extending an existing fence along the entirety of Lindbergh. And they'll be putting in, if it, if it were to be approved in the letter of recommendation forwarded on, additional car and vehicle storage on this site. So Gretchen, if you can pull it up on Google, on Google Street View so that we can see what it looks like. So that's the site currently.
Yes.
Then would you go down a little bit to show what their current, what, what the current fencing looks like? It would be a continuation of what they have currently, which is a traditional chain link fence with slats. And in this case, they have green ones, although we didn't require any sort of color. But it would be a, a slat type of, type of, type of material. Something to, something to match what they have here. Now, the actions of the commission can be either you can, you can concur with staff and pass it as it's written. You can hold for additional information or you can pass and state that the condition shall remain a decorative site-proof fence. And we would just add that in and forward that on per your decision tonight.
What's the setback on the fence and would it just be in the same horizontal line of the?
It'd be in the same, or it would be in the same, just, just a straight continuation.
Okay. And can you go back down to where the fence isn't to the, to the site that's in question?
Yeah.
Okay.
So you can see there's already some, some grade changes. It's, but yeah, that's, that would, this, the, the fence would just continue in a direct line from where it currently terminates and be then along this frontage here that you see.
Will the fencing turn and make a corner, make a 90-degree?
Yes, it will fully enclose. Yes, it will fully enclose the site.
Okay.
We have any more questions?
I did see on here, Mr. Bedell did raise his hand. I'm not sure if he has a question or not.
Yeah, is there a motion?
There was a motion. I believe there was a motion and second it.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, I, I vote in favor of.
We have, we have, we'll go ahead and vote now. Ah, we've heard the motion and the second. We'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you. I, I would like to make one comment about the fence. It's over with. That type of fence with what they have right there along the highway and where you might have a lot of wind. Sometimes you can have those site-proof vinyl fences and you'll find that, one, if they're not out there cleaning them real good all the time, they get pretty nasty looking. And if you have a high wind, you're gonna have pieces of those fences blowing down. That's just, you know, especially the, the longer that they are. Just a comment. Correspondence? PC 1170.
First, we have PC 11170 Lynn Clay Development Corporation, which is an M3 Planned Industrial District. This is the, the big Earth City petition. It's a 1,100-acre site on the north of Interstate 70 and west of Earth City Expressway. Tonight, there is a petitioner requesting amendments to the permitted uses to include a, a fitness center. So as the commission may be familiar, Earth City is in kind of the northern part of west county and the specific tenant space or the specific address of the proposed gym is highlighted there in red on the aerial. PC 111-70 was a request for a change of zoning from FPNU Floodplain Non-Urban District to FPM1 Floodplain Industrial District. The proposed uses were industrial warehouse and an office complex. The planning commission recommended FPM3 Floodplain Planned Industrial District in lieu of FPM1. County Council concurred and adopted the M3 ordinance in May of 1971. The ordinance has been amended several times since then as development has evolved in Earth City. These amendments include, but are not limited to allowing commercial uses related to a particular industrial activity, telecommunications towers, and freestanding financial institutions. The most recent amendment was in 2022 to add one fitness center to the site. And the current request is to permit a second. And the current request is to permit a second gym slash fitness center. The proposed gym will not hold group classes and is more centered on individual training. The proposed hours of operation will be four AM to seven PM daily with one trainer on site at a time. The department is recommending approval of this request as we find that gyms and indoor recreation facilities are compatible with the office and industrial uses throughout Earth City. Furthermore, we find that gyms generally are appropriate within this development, not just gyms that focus on personal training. And therefore, we recommend not limiting the number allowed within this development. So at this time, I would like to request a motion.
You've heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion on, on the floor?
I have a question. Want to amend to approve?
Okay, second on that? Is there a second?
Handcapped, second.
Questions?
I have a question. Is it, is this gonna be run by the same people that run the other one?
No, it's a new user.
Okay, and then how close is it to the other one?
Um, if you go back to the aerial Gretchen, it's not right next door. Oh, sorry. The existing one, I'm not sure how well you can read the, the street names, but the existing one is on Shoreline. It's kind of at the curve of Shoreline Drive. I think it's forty-one thirty-two Shoreline, so.
Okay.
Sort of, yeah, kind of where your cursor is Gretchen, it's in there.
Okay. That's all my questions.
Any other questions? Take a vote on that. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you. Next letter. Correspondents?
So next we have PC eleven dash twenty-one LHCV three LLC, which is a mixed use development district. This is the Tesson Ridge Development. It's a ninety-nine point three four acre tract on the west side of Tesson Ferry Road, east side of Keller Road and northwest side of Brittender Road. The request tonight is to amend the required parking setbacks along Tesson Ferry. So this site is in South County and there you can see it outlined in red on the aerial. As the commission may recall, PC eleven dash twenty-one was a request for a change of zoning from C eight planned commercial district to MXD Mixed Use Development District to develop a large scale mixed use development with multifamily residences, attached and detached single family residences and a range of commercial uses. County Council adopted the MXD ordinance in September of twenty twenty-one. The concept plan has been approved and recorded and plans for two phases of residential development have been approved and are under construction. The current request is to amend the ordinance to reduce the parking setback for Area one A, which is part of the commercial area along Tesson Ferry Road. This is a preliminary site development plan submitted by the petitioner. It shows two restaurant buildings close to Tesson Ferry and they're accessed via Tesson Ridge Road and a hun, and one hundred and fourteen parking spaces. They're showing a twenty foot parking setback from Tesson Ferry in lieu of the eighty foot setback, which is required by the ordinance, and a forty foot parking setback from Tesson Ridge Road, which does meet the ordinance requirements. The department is recommending approval of this request. We find that the reduced setback will allow greater flexibility in site design as this parcel will be developed with more commercial buildings in the future. We find that the reduction will have a minimal impact on surrounding development along Tesson Ferry Road. And we are also recommending the addition of a twenty foot wide landscape buffer yard along Tesson Ferry. And at this time, I would like to request a motion.
We have a motion for approval?
Begging motion to approve.
Handcapped.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Question?
Yes, yeah, yes, I'm sorry.
This is Sandy. Regarding the twenty foot instead of the eighty foot, is that sort of, it seems like eighty foot, the parking would be, I guess, along Tesson Ferry? But with the twenty foot, it's more hidden from Tesson Ferry?
At the time, at the time of, in twenty twenty-one, when this came to the commission as a petition, they showed a placeholder at this, as this part of this site. At the time, we recommended that the parking be set back farther from Tesson Ferry Road. The intent for that being is to keep, to have more buildings sort of fronting along Tesson Ferry Road for a fairly attractive building frontage along the, along the roadway. As their development plans have become more refined, they have settled on, and in fact, there, I think there's been some news stories in South County media that two restaurant users, two new to the sort of general area restaurant users want to take over this site and develop with two new sit-down full-service restaurants, one of which would include a rooftop, a rooftop dining experience. To facilitate the design that you see on the screen, they need to allow some additional parking to be closer to Tesson Ferry than what had been originally proposed. So that's really the nature of it. We've been working with the applicant to ensure that the, that the structures, when they do, when it is time for permitting for those two buildings, architectural review will come back. So you will see those buildings before, before they receive any sorts of permits. But this is, this is part of their really final design sort of work that's more than the, than the preliminary work they did in twenty twenty-one.
That answer your question, Sandy?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Okay.
Question about the parking also?
Yes.
It appears like there was a lot of parking for those two buildings. And I see there's two future buildings shown on the south end. I guess there's future parking and future building on those, but that's not a lot of parking for a future building. Is all the parking shown necessary for those two proposed buildings?
Abby or Mel, can you, do you know the parking calculation numbers? Cause they're showing a hundred and fourteen spaces currently, correct?
Yes.
Right, and they're there on the, right there in the corner.
Oh, I see it now, down in the corner right.
Yeah, it's kind of small.
It is, yeah, it's hard to read.
But, um, the, they, there is a parking reduction for this portion of the site that was built into the MXD ordinance as well. The rationale for that being that we are expecting a lot of the people that will visit this part of the overall development will be coming from inside the development so that there may not actually be a need for what the typical parking requirement would be. I can't quite read what it says down there. I think it says total space is required one forty-three, but then the twenty percent reduction brings them down to one fourteen. But then it says total parking shown and I cannot read that.
I'm trying to pull it up. Total parking shown at the bottom says one eighty-nine.
Okay, thank you.
They're providing a very generous amount of parking above what is required, which is probably what that dashed, not probably, that is what that dashed line is. It would be their absolute minimum requirement, but then they are providing additional parking.
Okay.
Any more questions? Go ahead, Paul.
I was gonna say, I assume when they put the new, the new building in, then it'll take into account the additional parking that they're showing now?
Yes.
Get to use that.
Any more questions? No questions? Okay, we had a motion and a second. We have a vote of approval. All those signify by saying aye? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it, approved. Site plans?
Good evening, commissioners. This is PC thirty-one dash eighty-three Ronnie's Enterprises. The developer is proposing a Starbucks with drive-through in the C eight planned commercial district with a tract size of one point three acres, north of Lindbergh Boulevard, approximately four hundred fifty feet west of Baptist Church Road. This tract is associated with the Ronnie's Plaza Development in South County and the proposed lot and development area is outlined on the map in red. This proposed two thousand five hundred ninety-eight square foot Starbucks building is located on what is currently a parking lot. Here, the commissioners can see the general structure of the site. I forgot to advance the slide. Oh, Gretchen. And here's the landscaping. It adheres to the requirements of the C eight. You're also good to, all right, and proposed lighting as well as existing lighting. While there are no requirements for internal drive illumination, the proposal does not exceed zero point one foot candles onto Lindbergh Boulevard. And finally, there are a couple slides of architectural elevations. The building is twenty-one feet tall and has a screened rooftop and the side without windows is densely landscaped with shrubs and trees. There's three sides of this. All right, at this time, I'd like to request a motion.
You've heard the recommendation for approval. Do I have a motion?
Begging motion to approve.
For a second?
Elliot, second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Questions?
By saying aye? Yeah, questions? Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Yeah, just, just one question. There's no changes to the access right of the cut-ins to get in and out right now?
Yes, so the access would be through the parking lot or the internal drives. There's no new curb cuts on Lindbergh.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Any more questions? All right. We have a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All aye? Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you. Next site plan, Sam's Club, PC sixty-four dash zero four.
Yes, PC sixty-four oh four Sam's Club. This is a C eight planned commercial district. It's a twenty-six point two four acre site on the southwest corner of Lee May Ferry Road and Mel Avenue. We have architectural elevations for you tonight in association with a proposed Valvoline oil. So this site is in South County and there you can see it in red on the aerial. The kind of specific area of the site is that forty-five oh four toward the Lee May Ferry frontage. And they are proposing some facade changes in association with a, a new tenant at this spot. So some changes to the paint, as you can see from the existing is kind of redder and the proposed is a lighter color. And then a, a new metal panel architectural element that's in blue to match with the Valvoline brand standards. That's okay Gretchen, you can go to the next slide. And this is just a metal panel that will be on top of what's kind of a canopy and then a sign will be mounted to it. And so we're recommending approval.
You've heard the department's recommendation. Do I have a motion?
Elliot, motion for approval.
Second on that?
Second.
Any questions?
I have a question. Are they currently in business at the site? I've seen signs advertising oil changes at this location for a Valvoline recently.
They might currently be operating there, but they can't get permits to do any of their, their signs or, or the sign particularly without the planning commission approval of the architectural elevations.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second. We have a vote for the approval. All those signify by saying aye? Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Eyes have it. Next, site plan, PC oh eight oh nine, Quick Trip.
We have one more before that. This was kind of a later addition on Friday, so it might not be on your printed agenda. PC twelve dash ten Saint Anthony's Hospital, which is a C eight planned commercial district. It's a one hundred and three point seven acre tract on the southwest quadrant of Kennerly Road and Tesson Ferry Road. These are architectural elevations for the Cancer Center addition. This site is also in South County and there you can see it outlined in red. And it is a, about a twenty-four hundred square foot addition to the Cancer Center building. The proposed materials and color match the existing. So we are recommending approval.
Heard the recommendation of the staff. Do I have a motion on this?
Elliot, motion to approve.
Second? Do we have a second?
Approves. I'm second, sorry.
Any questions? No questions? We have a, we have a vote for the approval. All those signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Eyes? All opposed? Eyes have it. And I think Quick Trip is up next. No, it's not. What happened to Quick Trip?
Guys, did it get moved to the end? Let me real quick stop there.
Yeah, because they're in, that was me not knowing the order of numbers. I apologize for that.
All right, you guys want to do Melanie Huddleston first and then we could do Quick Trip last?
You go right ahead.
Okay, so PC thirty dash twenty-three Melanie Huddleston was a request for a change in zoning from R five Residence District and Floodplain R five Residence District to C eight and FPC eight, so this Plan Commercial District and Floodplain Commercial District for an adult daycare facility, medical office and office on a tract size of two point two five acres located on the east side of Hall's Ferry Road, approximately two hundred feet north of Capital Drive. As the commission may recall, this site is located in North County. And as you can see on your right, the site is outlined in red. They plan to continue to use the existing building. The parking will remain the same. There are two new ADA stalls. That was the only change for parking that they did. Per the request of the planning commission, a landscape buffer has now been placed in that front yard along Hall's Ferry. They also, to comply with MoDOT, removed the monument sign that was in the front yard. And they also had to move the directional sign into the property line to conform with MoDOT. Here, the, as they are not making any changes to the building on the exterior, the building is staying the same. And staff is recommending approval.
Heard the recommendation of the staff. Do I have a motion for approval?
Begging motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Williams, second.
Is there any questions? No questions? Take a vote on that. All those in favor by signify by saying aye? Eyes?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you. And next, PC zero eight dash zero nine twenty-two Quick Trip.
PC oh eight and oh nine dash twenty-two Quick Trip Corporation was a request for a C eight planned commercial district to permit convenience store with fuel pumps on two point five eight acres located on the northwest quadrant of Butler Hill Road and Lee May Ferry Road. As the commission may recall, this site is located in South County and on your right, you can see the parcel outlined in red. So they are going to have a new building put up with a gas pump with. So they are going to have a new building put up um with a gas pump with canopies. Um, they also will have two price uh monument signs, one along Lee May Ferry and one along Butler Hill. Also, per um, all the lighting is within the means of not exceeding zero point one foot candles at any of the property lines. Um, landscaping for the site is adequate, meets the standards of their C eight ordinance as ran by this commission. This is the architectural elevations for the trash enclosure um as it meets the same material as the building. Um, this is the, what the fence will look like um in the back corners of the lot, it will be sightproof and decorative. Um, per, also in their C eight, they um were required to do a Casin, this is the location of the old Casinbaum building. So a Casinbaum monument um was required of them, so they will take materials from the original building and create this sign. This is what the price signs will look like, again, one off of Lee May and one off of Butler Hill. This is what the canopies will look like. And this is the building elevations, um, as you can see, we've got several facades um of just fenestration on all facets of the facade. And staff is recommending approval.
You've heard the recommendation of the staff, do we have a motion of approval?
So.
Have a second on that?
Good second.
Okay, are there any questions?
Yeah, I saw that, yes, I saw that.
Go ahead, sorry.
I have a question, uh, I'm just curious, uh, it sounds very interesting, tell me about this Casinbaum monument and sign and that site, what's the significance of that and requiring that?
So this was a little before my time, Jacob or Mel might be able to better respond to that.
So down at that corner, there is a historic structure that um has been there for well over a hundred years. And it had, if you'll go back to that, go back to that um slide that shows the monument. So it has a, a well-known, has a well-known name, uh, the Casabom building is well-known in that, in that general vicinity. Um, so where it says Casabom is, is actually pieces from the existing structure that have, will be removed and put into um this monument that, which is there at the corner uh of the, of the, of the two streets to memorialize the uh, what had been the, you know, the historic structure of the site.
So who were the Casinbaums, I just don't know. And this is something we can discuss offline, it just seems pretty interesting.
It was a family that ran several, that ran a, several businesses down there, I don't remember whether our report dove into.
It was the Session Furniture Company was there for a long time, um, I'll put this link in the chat where they talk about the, the history of it a little bit.
Thanks Mel.
I do believe that the um cast stone accents that you're seeing around, they also intend to pull from the original building as long as everything, you know, comes off in one piece roughly, um.
Yeah, this sort of shape is on the, is on the roof line of the building as it exists and then the text is on the roof line right now. Or was, I don't know if they've demolished it already.
Uh, they're working on it.
Okay, and the landscaping and trees that we see, that's a part of the landscaping plan for this site?
Yes ma'am, yes ma'am.
Okay.
Um, will the gas still be two twenty-five a gallon or whatever that sign said?
We can make no guarantees.
Jacob, a question for you, how long have they been uh working on this with you folks, did you get disapproved?
Oh, several years.
Been going back and forth?
Yeah, i- it took several years and that was because they, the way that they described it to us is they sort of had been working on site plans for multiple other sites and other places.
Right.
And so this one, they, they finally worked their way through that before they really, really got into the site development plan and permitting process for this, so once they got started, it, it sort of moved more quickly, but it took them a little while before they really um, before they really jumped through the permitting process.
I think also to some degree, there was, they wanted to make sure that they could produce what we were asking of them from the Casinbaum monuments um by making sure that they could get those materials and just examining the building condition as well.
We have one of our offices across the street, now to say, at first when I saw this, I'm thinking, well, this is a little bit overkill, but somehow it feels sort of reassuring, you know, it, it does, just because I drive, drove by that, you know, building and drive by it all the time and I'm thinking, oh wow, that is sort of nice, you know, is that something that is, you know, done often?
Um, I wouldn't say that it's done often because it's so site and context driven, but staff, we do, whenever we see something or an opportunity where we can um either, you know, work with a petitioner to save historic buildings or um in the case where it's not possible or not, or not, you know, desired, uh, you know, working to see whether we can save some sort of aesthetic piece of the history of, of the community. Um, or just the inclusion of additional public arts. Um, the, the, another example I think of and it's a, it's been a few years, but um like we worked with a Nine Mile Garden to have um, you know, some, that attractive um sort of mural that they put out, um, we, so we do work with applicants, um, where feasible and where appropriate for, to either do, um, to do these kinds of things and that's where the planned districts really give you all the ability and authority to require it.
Well, I don't, I'm not sure what else you would have done with that building. That would have been, you know, a tough, and of course it was there for, for a long time, not used and just.
That's right. It was, it really was suffering from a lot of um neglect and was, it had, it, it did have some structural issues with it.
Did Quick Trip give you any pushback on saving the sign?
Oh, I mean, Quick Trip wants to ensure that everything that they do is most, as economical as possible, which from the pub, from the private sector makes total sense. Um, but um after multiple conversations, they became amenable to it and I think that they, I hope that they realize that it'll be a great asset to their, um, to their site.
Hopefully nobody runs off the road there. Oh boy, okay, we've had a, a motion and a second, any more questions? All those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, eyes have it. And do we have any other snuck in there?
I don't think any official business, but we do have several, we do have several um items for the good of the order, so, um, but the first item for the good of the order is um this month's educational opportunity that Summer's been working on, so Summer, why don't you take it away?
Uh, good evening commissioners, tonight we will be talking about Proposition S, a ballot measure by MSD which was passed in April. We'll go through why it is important, what it means for developers and how the planning department and planning commission can support stormwater management in the county, county. As commissioners know, flooding is a major problem in the Saint Louis area and it's getting more and more frequent. On the right is an image of the major creeks and streams in Saint Louis County, approximately ten percent of the total area of the county is in the floodway. An additional six percent is in the one hundred year flood plain and about two percent more is in the five hundred year flood plain. So that means in total about one-fifth of the county is vulnerable to flooding when creeks, streams and rivers are overwhelmed. Next slide. Alright, so part of the reason for flooding is the county's natural location at the confluence of the rivers. Commissioners can also see the river tributary system of creeks and streams across the area. But a second reason for increased flooding is impervious surfaces such as roofs and pavement. Water that might have been absorbed into the soil now rolls off the surface and collects more rapidly. And as we know, excessive flooding is not only bad for our overground infrastructure, but impervious pavement also depletes groundwater and contaminates runoff, carrying pollutants into the waterways. Thus, issues caused by excessive impervious pavement and lack of stormwater management are amplified downstream. Next slide. Um, Proposition S was a ballot measure introduced by MSD which serves all of Saint Louis City and the majority of the county. The reason for this measure is to produce funding for stormwater improvements throughout the city and county through two channels, a slight increase in property tax for homeowners and more notably, a fee for impervious surfaces on non-residential developments. And as commissioners can see, the number of stormwater issues has increased across each of the major watersheds in the region. Um, this ballot measure was approved by voters in April of this year. Next slide. The money accrued in these fees will support improvement projects across the city and county. On the right is one of the most urgent projects, new inlets in an after neighborhood to support the increased overground flow caused by concrete walls and pavement. Next slide. So what does this fee look like? Homeowners will pay an additional seven point five cents for each one hundred dollars of assessed value of properties taxes each year and non-residential property owners will pay one dollar and five cents per one thousand square feet of impervious surfaces per month. So that's about forty-five dollars and seventy-four cents per acre. As an example, this parcel to the right, which is basically totally paved over, would cost about twelve hundred dollars per year in prop S fees. Next slide. Um, Gretchen, I don't know if you can see, the next slide is right down. Oh, oh, sorry, I, I see it, okay. Alright, not only is impervious surface not ideal for flood and pollution runoff management, it is also expensive. So the parcel shown on the previous slide exceeds its maximum parking requirement. The calculation shows how much it would cost to put these spaces in from scratch and this cost doesn't even factor in the environmental consequences of flooding caused by unregulated runoff on impervious surfaces. Next slide. Oh, sorry, I added a little animation, I don't know why, Gretchen, next slide. So how did we get here? Um, below is a chart on the ways that the zoning ordinance facilitates or limits impervious pavement on development. Largely, the zoning ordinance does not have provisions or restrictions on impervious surfaces. This generally has the effect of facilitating more of these services. So for example, while there are provisions for maximum lot coverage by structures in the C one, C two and C three commercial districts, there are no restrictions in any other district. Um, most impervious surfaces on non-residential lots are comprised of parking lots. By having rigid parking minimums and design criteria, the zoning ordinance basically mandates a portion of the lot to be covered by pavement. Um, overparking on pervious pavement is only required in some districts. Otherwise, the only thing that punctuates a parking lot is the eight foot by eighteen foot landscaped islands. Similarly, required landscaping is only along street frontage or buffer yards between parcels of different zoning types. And while turf grass, which is notoriously less absorbent than native plants, is discouraged, nothing prohibits its use. And finally, while there are stream buffer areas for the one hundred year flood plain, there are no other requirements within the zoning ordinance for any onsite storm and flood management. We can pause on this slide for a second to take it all in, oh, or, or you could go ahead, no, no worries. Cool. So how can the planning department and planning commission support stormwater management practices? I have divided intervention points into three tiers and we will go from smallest to largest. So first, planned districts are a way that the commission can both encourage flexibility of site design but also put in provisions which limit lot coverage by structures and pavement, increase landscaping or consider alternative materials. But the ordinances which govern a planned district are site-specific, so each one must be considered individually. Um, on a greater scale, the commission can consider revisions to the zoning ordinance which change requirements for existing zones in order to limit impervious surfaces on new developments. And finally, the goal of the comprehensive plan is to recommend a countywide path towards the future. So by remaining engaged with the plan, commissioners can help the built environment of the county overall be more environmentally responsive and better at managing inevitable floods. If you guys have any questions, welcome.
I do have a question, uh, this is Todd, when, when you're talking about other materials, are we talking uh pervious concrete asphalt, that type of specialty material that allows water to flow through?
Right, yeah, that's, that was what I was thinking, like, if that's only allowed in certain districts.
So when that is allowed in certain districts, is there anything that uh mandates going back and maintaining that? Right, because a lot of those things, if, that, that concrete, that special concrete is not cleaned, it just clogs up and then it becomes impervious again and it seems like, I've seen this going on different projects where it wants to go in on North Grand, they wanted to put it in there, but then no one's going to come and maintain it after the fact. So really, it, you know, it, it wasn't making any difference. Is there any way to add that into the ordinances on who's going to maintain this type of specialty material?
I think that's a great, I think that's a great consideration because as, as it's currently written, the, what, how a property owner would be captured is that if their site fell into sort of a disrepair and was then cited, if there was some sort of unsafe um sort of um issue at the site, so say um, you know, a, a developer put in uh pervious pavers as part of their, as part of their um project. If it was buckling and was, was going to be harmful to health and welfare, the county can um cite someone. But if it looks and it's perfectly safe for an individual to use or walk on, there would, there is currently no requirement for, the county's not going to go out and test to ensure that the site um is, you know, that the water infiltration is still, is still working. So um, it's either, but then, so then the question to me that that raises is, could there, in a, in a theoretical future um be an ordinance that requires that, theoretically, yes, but I think pervious pavement is, it has the right, it has the right property and the right projects, but the sort of mass expansion of imp, of pervious pavement can be really expensive and some of the issues that you bring up, the, the cleaning of the impervious, or excuse me, the pervious can be um really onerous on property owners. So I think that not only Saint Louis County, but a lot of local governments have looked at ways to where pervious makes sense or where the property owner really wants it because maybe they can't build a stormwater detention facility or something, so they are, you know, putting this pervious in to meet MSD's requirements um is one case, but I think the bigger picture um that we're looking at and thinking about is just how in the future can we have less impervious at all, more green space, because that's the more natural way and the better, the better way um to sort of allow for that infiltration, um, it's usually cheaper and easier for residents or property owners to maintain that than the, than the pervious pavement, so it's, pervious is to, is just one tool that makes sense in certain contexts.
Yep, yeah, I, I've just seen a couple of projects have the best of tensions going in there, right? And then everybody's pointing the finger, you know, a year later, who's going to take care of it and, you know, you spent a ton of money and it's, you know, you might as well went back with normal concrete or asphalt because there, there's no advantage anymore, so.
On private property, it would always be the private property owner's responsibility um to maintain it.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
MSD, MSD, Jacob, I, usually I, I would say on any uh property anywhere, uh, it's gonna be on the onus of, of the property owner.
That's correct, so all the stormwater detention facilities that you see popping up, your, your underground detention, all of that is um incumbent upon the property owner to maintain it, so that may be another direction that if a parcel, and this is very site-specific again, because I think pervious is really a very site-specific type of material. If you had a really tight site, but you had to mitigate your stormwater runoff and the only way to do it, or one of the tools you had at your disposal was pervious, um, and MSD approved that, then if you did not, if your, if your pervious pavement became clogged up and you were no lo, and it was no longer functioning the way that MSD approved, that would be the other enforcement way that it would come into play. Um, but that's why, but you know, to be a little bit circular and repetitive, that's why I think that pervious pavement is a very, it's an important tool, but it's a tool that's really um, really site and contextually important. Um, I think from the bigger picture, um, what we're really excited about through the comprehensive planning process and, and um other sorts of um conversations that we want to have is, how do we just reduce pervia, impervious um development period? So that there's just a lot less, a lot fewer um large parking fields in the future.
Well, how often does MSD do inspections on uh neighborhood detention basins dry or wet?
You mean like in a subdivision?
Yes.
So in a residential subdivision, essentially if there's not really much of a problem, MSD won't really show up unless, uh, but, but I don't know how frequently the cadence is that they sort of go out and do spot inspections of those kinds of, that type of infrastructure. I'd have to reach out to our um, to our colleagues at MSD and sort of get an idea of that, which I don't mind, I don't mind myself or staff um just asking that of MSD, of our MSD. Um, just asking that of MSD, of our MSD contacts, um, and be happy to.
That has, um, the known issues. Those are all reported by the community.
But as, is that after the fact when they do have a flooding problem?
I have to assume so, yeah. There, it's basically report driven.
Yeah.
What a shame. Good report. Very good.
Thank you, Summer. That was, um, I found it enlightening, the research that you did and I really appreciate it, so thank you.
Paul?
What else do we have on here? Yeah, it's me, my turn. Um. Uh, yeah, uh, thank you, uh, commissioners for, for having me here. I'm just going to do a quick update on. Uh, SEO code 2050, um, where we're at, uh, you can see an engagement calendar. Um, this weekend, we're going to be at the Spirit St. Louis Air Show and STEM Expo at the Spirit St. Louis Airport in Cheshire Valley. Uh, so if you have the time and you like airplanes, come, uh, come say hi. I will say, uh, Commissioner Taylor stopped by la- this past weekend, uh, when we were at the Green Living Festival. Um, it's really nice to, to see a friendly face, so, uh, we would love to, to see you all out there as well. Um, but, uh, don't, don't, uh, let me guilt you into it either. Uh, we're also going to be at the, the Fenton, uh, Community Farmers Market. Uh, we were there last week and, and I think we had a, uh. Um, a good experience talking with folks. We're going to go back, uh, later this month. Um, and then our last sort of big official, uh, engagement, um, event is going to be, um, at JB Blast. Uh, which is always a great time, um, if you want to come see us there. Um, if you can go to the next slide, Gretchen. I did want to briefly mention that the, um, statistically valid survey that was sent out, uh, a few months ago. Um, has concluded, we received the, the required number of responses, um, and, um, have a report. Um, sort of compiling all the findings. Um, we, you know, we'd be happy to, to share that with you if you, uh, would like to see it, but I think we're still working through, uh, kind of figuring out. Um, all, what all the finding, what, what all the findings are and kind of their, uh, impact on, on the planning process moving forward. Uh, so maybe wait a few weeks and we could, we'd be more able to, to discuss what's actually in it with you. Uh, but if you want to look at it, we can share that with you as well. Uh, and then the, the existing conditions report, um, is live, it's on the website. I want to thank you all for your hard work, um, in the, that meeting last month, um, working through it. Um, and, um, any sort of comments or feedback that you provided, um, was really helpful. Um, so if you go to the, uh, SEO code 2050 website, St. Louis County 2050 dot com. And there's along the navigation menu along the top of the, the screen, um. There should be a button for existing condition report, uh, which you can click on. Uh, it provides a really, uh, brief kind of overview of what, uh, the ECR is and kind of how to navigate, um, once you're in it. Um, and then at the bottom, you can click, uh, a link to, that takes you to the existing conditions report introduction. Um, which is what we all looked at, uh, at your meeting. Um, and then sort of you read through that and then, uh, at the end of that, there's a menu where you can navigate to other. Um, story maps about housing, uh, land use and development, transportation, infrastructure, economic development, those types of things. Um, I think there might be one more. Yeah, so this is a, this is a, just a screen grab of what the menu looks like. Um, so those little icons, um. Are, uh, hyperlinks that would take you to, um, the respective story map. And then just next steps, uh, we're going to sort of continue and, and kind of wrap up community engagement and outreach through this month. Um, we'll still be going out and talking with folks, but, uh, kind of the end of June is sort of marks the official. Um, end of our, our big outreach, um, push. Um, and then sort of in the summer and into the fall, we're going to be transitioning to scenario planning, um, and sort of testing. Um. Ideas about, you know, if, if we've kind of heard from folks, uh, about where we want the county to go over the next 25 years. Um, the scenario planning, um, part of the process is us kind of testing. Um, you know, policy ideas and, and, and new programming or enhanced programming that the county already has. Um, to kind of see, um, what's going to get us to where we've identified that we want to go. Um, and then we'll begin to draft sort of plan recommendations, uh, and an implementation strategy out of that. Um, so I imagine we will have additional working sessions with you all. Um, in the not too distant future, um, as we, as we work through. Um, crafting the, the plan document and the, and the recommendations out of it. Um, and I just want to, again, uh, note my appreciation and I think I could speak for, for Jacob and the rest of the, the planning staff here. Um, for your, um, assistance and, and sort of working with us through this, uh, process.
And only, just I want to build on top of something that Paul said, which is about our outreach. Um, is that our first big, this is the first big push. Uh, we will continue to be doing outreach to stakeholders, to, we're meeting with community groups with various commissions here at county government. Then we will have a second large engagement push in the fall when we will have several, um, town halls around the county showing people. Not just the existing conditions report, uh, but really showing them, um, ideas about what the plan, um, how it's shaping up and asking for their responses and feedback. On drafts of, of things. So there will be, there's a lot more, uh, outreach to, to go. Uh, we're, this is just a wrap up of our first big push of, of outreach. Thanks, Paul.
Sure. Any questions or?
What is the time, Paul? The one in Fenton, Fenton Park?
Um, I think it's 4:30 to 7:30, um, on, on Thursday, the, the 20th, um. I don't know, Gretchen, you were there, if you could.
That's correct.
Um, it's like under the, like main pavilion, I think, right?
Yeah, it's under the pavilion and there's just a bunch of different vendors. Um, so it was a lot of fun.
Okay, I'm out and about there sometime, time. Okay, thank you.
Thanks for the report, Paul. Very good. Any questions for Paul? There you go.
Thanks, everyone.
Then the last two items, we didn't, um, we don't really have a s- slides for Jacob. I don't know if you want to talk about the nominating committee?
Yes, so, uh, Mr. Presiding Officer, because of, uh, Mr. Sneed. Um, no longer being on the commission and, uh, Mr. Hilsinger's, um, situation. Uh, we recommend putting together a nominating committee, which would be, uh, at, at least three commissioners. Um, to create a, a nominating slate for, uh, a new chair, a new vice chair. Um, to, to fill those slates since you are the only, uh, you are only, the only officer remaining on the commission. Um, so we would make that recommendation that you constitute a nominating committee. Um, that nominating committee would then have a, could have a meeting prior to one of your upcoming meetings to discuss. Um, a nominating slate, um, report out to the full commission and then the full commission would take up that report and, um, you know, vote on nominations for. Uh, new, for new, um. Um, elected, uh, members are, um, of the, of the commission, a new chair and vice chair. Um, and perhaps new secretary depending upon how you all, um, you know, move, move those things around. And according to our bylaws, as the, um, you're essentially, as, as the acting chair of the commission, um, you are authorized to appoint. Um, those members of that commission, that, that committee to, uh, to do that.
Okay. We have to do that tonight or can we do that?
If you want to, if you want to think about it, um, we can, uh, discuss that at your executive session in a week. Um, put that nominating committee together and then, um, at your meeting in July, you could report out, the, the nominating committee could report out from there.
Let's do that and then I'll make, maybe make some phone calls and talk to some folks.
Okay.
Okay.
And then the other item relates, as Jacob just brought up, um, the commission's bylaws.
Yeah, so we also had, are, are recommending that, um, as part of this, you also appoint. A, an ad hoc bylaws committee. So the commission's bylaws were last updated in the 1980s. And as such, staff finds that it would be, um, reasonable for the commission to revisit those bylaws. Um, bring them up to, um, contemporary standards and therefore, um, it would set the base. Um, you know, for the, for the future way that the, the commission, um, operates. We actually do have a, um, a draft version that we produced for the commission, I think it was about two years ago. Um, and the time just wasn't right to address, um, the bylaws. But I would recommend that, um, if you're, if you're amenable, uh, Mr. Taylor, to appoint an ad hoc bylaw committee. Uh, to review those and make recommendations for bylaws updates to the commission, which could be done similarly. You have the authority to appoint those members based on, um, their, on anyone's desire to do so, um, and then to report out as appropriate.
Okay, well, we'll do the same. I will be making some phone calls and we'll get committees together for both.
That's great. I appreciate it. Um. One thing also, as we, as we prepare to wrap up, um, I also want to publicly congratulate Peter and Aviola. Uh, both of them passed the, um, examination to become, um, AICP certified. So, uh, becoming an AICP certified planner is, um, a big step in a planner's professional career. Um, individuals who pass that exam, um, show and demonstrate that they have a, a, a strong mastery of the planning profession, the sort of legal undergirding, that the ethical. Um, the ethical sort of undergirding of our profession. Um, additionally, AICP certified planners also, um, are bound by a code of ethics ensuring that, um, the work that we do as planners. Um, is appropriate, ethical, um, and that we're, we're doing it to the highest standard to the benefit of the entirety of the community. So I'd really like to just publicly, um, congratulate Aviola and Peter on passing that exam. It took a lot of, took a lot of, uh. Uh, studying and a lot of work to get it, get it. So congratulations, you guys.
Very good.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Does, does that mean we're going to have like a celebration party before our next meeting?
I always love celebration parties.
Okay, any, anything else, uh, under, go to the order?
I don't believe so.
Jacob, I thought we talked about, um, when we were chatting about a possible committee for the 2050, um, plan.
That's correct. So, um, another, another opportunity for the commission is, so the way that the. Bees, the St. Louis County 2050 comprehensive plan, we've been coming to you all.
Jacob, this is Jen Frank. Um, since this wasn't on the planning commission's agenda. And I'm sorry commissioners, I'm Jen Frank, I'm attending for John Burford tonight in the county council's office. I would recommend rather than discussing this, unless you think it's part of the 2050. Update is that I'd either recommend putting this on the agenda the next meeting unless it's part of the 2050 update.
Um. I suppose we can talk about it. We can, we can put it on the agenda for a week from now and discuss it. Um, that would be fine.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anybody that would like to be on any of these committees of, uh, if you don't have my cell phone number. It is 314. 4396419.
Hey, this is a public, is this, no, this is, oh, sorry.
It is public, but that's okay.
Okay.
We will probably be able to do something with editing to get rid of that.
Would you do me a favor and just send out my cell phone number?
We can, we can do that.
We'll share your contact.
All the members.
All for staff, we don't have anything else to discuss.
I'll probably change my number now, but that's okay. Thank, thank you so much. Uh, we'll see you at the next meeting, which is?
A week from tonight at 7:00 PM, we'll have public hearing, uh, in person in the chamber.
Intend.
And we do have a full, a full notice, so, uh, eat your protein bar before.
It's a public hearing. We have an executive meeting before that.
And then we'll have a short executive session after, yes.
Okay. Thank you all. Have a good week.
Well, now we just need a motion to adjourn.
Yes, we do.
Motion.
Please do. We have a mo- motion to adjourn. Do we have a second? Second. Favor, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, ayes have it. Meeting adjourned.
Thanks, everyone.
Aye.
Thanks, everyone.